And now, there's a little bill that looks like we have more interest in. Is anybody in the hallway that'd like to come in for this public hearing on House Bill 312?
What is he doing?
Yeah.
That has to be notified now. That should not certify.
Where is he?
The address isn't certified.
All right.
He got put out of the house.
They need to send the sheriff out there near the house.
Yeah, yeah. The man, he didn't know. Nobody told you.
Well, it's because they didn't do the tax.
Are we ready?
They did the title right.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, now, we will begin the public hearing on House Bill 312 by Mr. Oliver. I have here a list of people who would like to speak. I'm gonna give each one of you about three minutes to state your case. I've got a timer up here, so you can kind of see me wave, you know it's it. Mr. Oliver, please present your bill. You have more than three minutes, by the way, sir.
I appreciate that, and I hope I don't need it. The purpose of House Bill 312, this is a bill that bans some racist concepts only. We are fighting for a colorblind America, and we believe it is an abuse of power to subject students or employees who are in a subordinate position to learn racist concepts from some who are in a position of authority and influence. And that's really where we're going with this bill. The purpose is not just to ban the teaching of CRT, which everybody's heard a lot about. It is to protect the freedom of speech and thought and ideas of students and any state employee. Now, how are we gonna do that? Well, we've got some concepts that we have put into this bill. And for anyone that has read the bill, then you understand it's pretty clear. And what it does, it gives you the boundaries, both for state employees, for K through 12, and for higher ed. Simply, that's what the bill does. I think it makes it easier for teachers to understand what's permissible and what's not. It doesn't keep you from teaching anything that you already teach, except in K-12 where you have a mandated, already mandated curriculum. In other words, it's to simplify the things that we think are acceptable and still protect First Amendment rights. And the bottom line of this bill is, is to uphold the Civil Rights Act of 1964. Anyone have any questions?
About?
Yes, sir.
No.
Mr. Rogers?
No, I'm gonna start off.
Turn on your microphone.
The, I want you to understand, that you're talking about the, this bill has been all watched, it's been everywhere, it's been talked about all over the world now, about this incident. That CRT is not black history now, you understand that, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We're not talking about black history, I don't think.
I know, but what you're saying, are you saying you think it ought to be taught? Or should it be considered at all? What you're being, are you just trying to say, bring to attention?
No, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to teach our kids to be colorblind.
Okay, well, tell me, how does the concept of teaching them about, about what happened in Oklahoma, or what happened in Florida, make them not colorblind? I mean, colorblind, if you want to be colorblind, you're gonna be colorblind anyway. But what does that do by teaching the concept? You know, it was written by a Caucasian person, wrote the whole thing up in the first place as a research paper, for a doctoral research paper, right? As I got started.
Are you talking about Dr. Delgado?
Whatever his name is.
He's Hispanic.
Well, he looked more like you than he do me. So, that's why I look at it. But now, what's wrong with them teaching about the massacre in Oklahoma, or the...
Nothing. That's history and should be taught.
Yeah, well, so, are you saying should be taught or should be taught?
Yeah, no, that should be taught.
I think so, too. I think that, that you want to buy all concepts of what happened in the history books, you know, is history.
Yeah, I think the best way to understand this, if you look at the divisive concepts that we look at, I don't know anyone that would not agree with these as being divisive concepts.
What?
This does nothing to curb teaching about black history or any other history.
What's the bad? What's the bad? If you for a fact, if I, the history said, like, the history said the Indians were violent people, and when they came over here, they colonized, discovered America, and we found that that was a false also. It didn't happen that way. A lot of the Indians saying they ruled, they had been in school and taught the folks how to survive, and then all of a sudden, they started savages and saying that, but that's not part of history also. What I'm saying to you, this is that, it should be, it's not divisive to teach folks what happened back in history, it's not divisive. For CRT concerned.
I didn't say that was divisive.
What you're saying, what you want, your bill is saying something, I'm reading something wrong in your bill, and, uh, stay from teaching, training, stay from teaching about it, what's, why? Because history teaches. It happened, it happened.
I think we've got a disconnect here somewhere. What we're talking about is, we want to ban the divisive concepts, period. We don't want to keep anyone from teaching history. And remember, history is one of those things that will always be debated. There are some things that you can prove happened that are factual, and there are other things you can't. Some are subjective.
That makes sense.
Representative Rogers, for example, that an individual's moral character is determined solely on the basis of his or her race, sex, or religion. Who would want to teach that to a child?
Well, now, I ask you a question. You and I are totally different. You got your own area where you survive and do things, and I got mine. So, but what's wrong with teaching, what's wrong with teaching them? I'm trying to figure what your bill is trying to do.
Well...
Tell me exactly, in one, two, three, four, what is he really trying to do?
We're trying to keep racist language out of various curriculums if we can.
What's racist language?
Those are the 12 divisive concepts that I've got here.
It worries me when somebody of a Caucasian, they can tell me about what's racist and divisive.
Well, then, remember, this is for people that have authority over other people.
I want to know exactly what you're really trying to get to.
Mr. Rogers, you're getting real close, and you're not talking in your microphone. Can we go to Ms. Hollis, please?
I'm talking to the microphone. Tell me, what are you trying to achieve?
I thought, I just got through that. The purpose of this bill is to try to ban some racist concepts that we would like to see limited or not taught at all in schools, depending where you are, and certainly not in, not subjugate, or have people subjugated that are employees, particularly state employees, is what we address in this bill. So, once again, we are fighting for a colorblind America, and we believe it is an abuse of power to subject students or employees who are in a subordinate position to learn racist concepts from someone in a position of authority or influence.
Right. Racist, what do you consider a racist concept?
They are written in this bill.
Those are not a racist concept. Okay, okay, I mean...
The divisive concepts in this bill.
Let me let Ms. Hollis ask him questions now. She's been very patient. Thank you.
I have several. Let me see. Number one, I would like to know, what are the problems that we're having in our schools right now? And what is deceptive, what is it, divisive concepts? And where is that currently being taught? Because I'm really trying to get an understanding, because, and you speaking of having a colorblind world, and no one more than me would love to have a colorblind world, but it's not a reality, not in my world, it's not. So, those are some, and I got a few other questions for you, too, but let's start off with, what are the problems with in our schools now? And when you talk about this divisive concepts, where is that, is it, where is it being currently taught?
Well, first of all, most folks relate this to CRT, Critical Race Theory. Their language is malleable, so it changes. There's all sorts of things that have been taken different names that are basically the same concepts. These are all based on the same principles that Dr. Delgado came up with in the 70s. It's something that stayed in hibernation for years and years and years, but in the last couple of years has reemerged. As we see it now, it virtually, it has infiltrated virtually every school system we have in some form or fashion. Now, no curriculum in the state of Alabama currently has any CRT training, per se.
So, can you give me an example of a school subject matter that has deceptive concepts, divisive concepts in it?
I will tell you that there is one superintendent of education who said she will continue to teach this regardless of what bill it has.
Teach what?
These concepts.
Can you, can you tell me your, I know you keep saying this is in the bill, but can you publicly tell me, what are your concepts?
The concepts are that one race, sex, or religion is inherently superior to another race, sex, or religion, that this state or the United States is inherently racist or sexist, that an individual solely by virtue of his or her race or sex is inherently racist, sexist, or oppressive, whether consciously or unconsciously, that an individual should be discriminated against or receive adverse treatment solely on the basis of his or her race, that members of one race should attempt to treat others differently solely on the basis of race, that an individual's moral character is determined solely on the basis of his or her race, sex, or religion, that an individual solely by virtue of his or her race, sex, or religion bears responsibility for actions committed in the past by other members of the same race, sex, or religion, that fault, blame, or bias should be assigned to a race, sex, or religion, or to a member of a race, sex, or religion solely on the basis of their race, sex, or religion. I continue.
Okay, well, while you're reading, on page four, line three, what does it mean when you state to work harder, work harder solely on the basis of her race, wait a minute, of his or her race or sex? What does that mean?
That talks about competition. That any individual should be assigned to accept, acknowledge, affirm, or assent to a sense of guilt, complicity, or need to work harder solely on the basis of his or her race or sex.
Okay, and in your own words?
That because I'm one particular race or sex, I have to work harder to achieve the same thing that someone else does.
I've been doing that all my life, sir. All my life. I had to work hard at everything I do. And whatever I want to reach, or how I want to go, I've had to work hard as hell to get to some places. And I don't worry about ever sitting at a table, because I bring my own chair, because if I don't bring my own chair, I'm not gonna get there. So, when you speak of that, I've been doing that all my life, and how can I be blind to that? Or blind to telling my children, or my grandchildren, where I come from, as well as their grandparents and their grandparents? And to teach, and to let our kids know where they come from, how did they get here, and blossom them with the tree that they come from, is just unrealistic to me to not be able to teach our children that. So, I have more questions for you, but I don't want to take it, because I could take up, I'm, it's my time, sir. I can take up probably a whole day on this issue right here, you know, because it bothers me, and, you know, two days been here around here, you know?
I understand.
And, no, you don't. No, you don't, sir. You do not. You do not understand. I promise you, you don't.
Ms. Hollis?
I'm just, yes, sir, Mr. Chair.
That's fine.
I'm tired. But I did say that I was going to let someone else speak, because I do have other questions. And I know that we trying to get in session, and I know that we tight on time and everything, but you shouldn't have put this bill last, sir, you know, so, okay.
I would ask you to look at what that line actually said, though, that any individual should be asked to accept. I agree with you 100%.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, let me just state this real quick. Ladies and gentlemen, when I set this meeting and all these bills, we were supposed to go in at 8:30 this morning, and I did this on purpose, so we could sit here and go through all this and not be under a time crunch. Unfortunately, they switched on me, and so we're going in at 4:00, not 8:30. So, you gotta hurry up. And I'm like, well, I've got an important bill that I've got a lot of people that want to hear from. And I'd like to remind the members of the committee, we are not voting on this bill today. The members of this committee are gonna have all the time in the world to debate this bill, and discuss this bill, and ask questions. What I would like to get to is the public, because I want, I've got...
That was my comment.
Yeah, 11 people here from the public that want to talk about this bill, and I think it's important we hear from them. And I ask the members to let us debate it in our next committee meeting.
Whenever this bill here come up, it gonna be divisive. Whenever this bill come, wherever, whenever you bring it over here, tomorrow, the next week, or next year, it'll be just as divisive to us, to me, whenever it comes up, because the fact that, I don't really like, first of all, when I look at a bill, I look at two, three things. I look at the sponsors. I look at the bill, I read the bill, I know what the bill be about, I can tell what the bill gonna do when I look at the sponsor.
Okay.
I'm just gonna tell you. I didn't even lie to you about it.
Mr. Rogers?
I believe that's a divisive concept.
Yeah.
Divisive.
All right, Mr. Rogers, listen. The members are gonna have ample time to debate this bill, I can assure you that, but let's get to the public hearing. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm up here frantically working this out for all of us, but I'm gonna hold y'all to three minutes, the same I did everybody else in the public hearings. So, with that, I'd like to call Veronica Curtis Ritchie. Thank you, Ms. Ritchie. And at two minutes, I'll, you know, kind of give you a little heads up.
Ladies and gentlemen, let me first express my appreciation for the opportunity to address this distinguished body. My name is Veronica Curtis Ritchie. I am a retired educator, having served the Huntsville City Schools for 34 years, very successfully. I've taught in the classroom as a special education teacher, working directly with the minds of young people. I served as a school counselor, as a curriculum specialist, where I was charged with mentoring other teachers in the area of curriculum. I was also the drug education coordinator for the entire Huntsville City School System. I'm deeply concerned about the impact House Bill 312 will have on teachers and the students in their charge. Education is about facts and truth. Facts rightly understood and interpreted result in the truth. But one needs the facts, all the facts, positive as well as negative. Education is the act of imparting knowledge or information from the teacher to the student. And the major objective of a teacher is helping students develop and sharpen their ability to think critically for themselves. House Bill 312 will greatly damage the ability of our teachers to accomplish that. I believe further that House Bill 312 reflects an underestimation of the ability of our children to receive, digest, and make intelligent and informed judgments about the facts, all the facts, of our nation's history, both positive and negative. Critical race theory is one interpretation of our nation's history. It should be granted equal voice, along with the other theories in the educational process, a right or expression of the freedom of speech guaranteed to us by the First Amendment of the Constitution of these United States. When teachers are bound by laws that restrict their ability to convey the whole truth, the result is frustrated teachers who fear reprisal in the form of chastisement or firing, or teachers who simply leave the classroom, adding to the already critically shortage of teachers. Alabamians pride themselves to be a people of the book, the Bible, the strong religious Christian community that finds its fundamental values in the Bible. A strength of that sacred book is that in telling of the history of the chosen people of God, it tells the truth, the whole truth, some good, some bad. This book also tells us, you shall know the truth, and the truth shall make you free. If we are to enjoy a society that is totally free of the injustices that have occurred in the past, it is imperative that teachers have the freedom to teach the whole truth. Ladies and gentlemen, please reconsider the passage of this bill. Do not let your legacy be the strangling of an educational system that has the potential to help through the power of the free and unrestricted dissemination of information to overcome racial injustice. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, and I bet you were a wonderful teacher. Next, we're gonna hear from Robert White.
Wait. Camille Bennett.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Camille Bennett.
Listen, when you're proponent or opponent.
Yeah, they're all opponents, trust me.
Oh, yeah, I know, hey, but I wanted to say you against it.
And state your name at the microphone. I'm sorry.
My name is Camille Bennett.
Talk to me.
I am an activist. I became an activist in 1995 when I was 17, and they told me at Muscle Shoals High School, y'all know where they have the Muscle Shoals sound, and all the black and white people came together, that story. Anyway, they told me, no black history here. And I said, I just had to make it happen. So, I call myself lobbying, I guess. I go through the halls, and I talk to the teachers, and I talk to the principals, and then my mama goes up, and she talks to the superintendent, and the next year after I graduate, we have black history forever. At Kilby School, all white, my son was the only black child, they brought me in to talk about the foot soldiers. And all these white children, now, these are, the socioeconomic level is middle to upper-middle class, okay? These are white children. And I'm in there talking about the dogs, and Bull Connor, and the hoses, and how the kids went to jail, and these kids have questions for me. They are, I'm inundated with questions. But at the end of my lecture, what they say to me is, how do we do this? These are all the white kids. How do, how do we do that? Not a hint of guilt, or shame, or any kind of blame in the room, only the Holy Spirit. And the white teacher, white man, and I cried because it was beautiful. Now, let's talk about the bill. Y'all want to say divisive concept, but it looks like you singled out slavery. It's in there. Said it was a betrayal of US history, something like that, and I agree. I agree with that, but we gotta call it both ways. Senior Pastor Clifton McMillan said it first, but I'm gonna say it again. Y'all said, now, the Civil War, my son is taught that the Civil War is about states' rights, divisive concept. Y'all said, wait a minute, y'all bringing the Sons of Confederate veterans to talk about what the Civil War, divisive concept. Y'all said, y'all bring in children to the Andrew Jackson plantation, where they teach the children that he loved the slaves. That is a divisive concept. And you have museums that the states pays for. In my town, they had a plantation Christmas, y'all, yes, they did, a plantation Christmas, and not a mention of the 137 black bodies that built it and suffered, and suffered, divisive concept. So, if you feel that black history, and the nuances of black history will hurt the white children, which in my opinion is a false narrative, please be sure to consider how black children feel when you overlook their history to attempt to preserve the old South narrative. It goes both ways, and call it both ways. Now.
Thank you. Next, we'll, next on the opponent is Robert White.
Good afternoon.
That's Mr. White.
Yes, sir, I am, and I am an opponent of this bill. Ed Oliver and I, we're from the same place, Davil, Alabama, Tallapoosa County, and I challenged him to a debate at our old high school on Critical Race Theory and anything else he wanted to talk about, because as a career educator, I've been an educator for almost 30 years, and heck, until this stuff came up, I didn't know what Critical Race Theory was. I taught political science, constitutional law, African-American humanities, and I remember it being mentioned in law school, but it was mentioned as a footnote. But this is an excellent opportunity to bring up things that typically would not be brought up, had it not been for something like this coming up. So, in dealing with this bill, I represent a lot of educators that are very concerned about this, because it seems to, it seems to hinder and punish public discussion and academic and scientific analysis, which is the fundamental aspect of our republic. Our republic is based on critical thought, and it is based on the ability for an individual to express his or herself, and to own one's intellectual property. But when the state begins to try to tell us what our intellectual property is, and interpret it for us, not only do I think that is wrong, but I think it's theft. And on page four, as a historian, author of four books, I help other people write books, and most of this stuff, this fire, this energy and stuff, I get from my high school, Davil High School, and my contemporary issues class, government class, economic class, taught by Ms. Davis. Hope I didn't get her in trouble by mentioning her name, but... But, page four, where on line five through 10, not only is that, in my opinion, constitutionally vague, but that's historically inaccurate. It is historically inaccurate to say, in my opinion, that slavery and racism are anything other than derivations from betrayals of, or failures to live up to the founding principles of the United States, which include liberty and equity. My historical argument would be that America is based on slavery and racism, and I can prove it. But that is, should be limited to classroom discussion and debate. And young people should be able to articulate these positions at a very young age, because they do realize that there is a serious problem in our country. And they do pick up on the fact that our schools are now more segregated than ever with the private and the public, and that began with Brown versus Board of Education. But to eliminate the opportunity for the discussions to be had purely because the concepts were reflected in a theory that was presented by Delgado, when there's never really been any attempt to analyze or evaluate what Delgado was saying, when Derrick Bell was the one that brings it to the forefront? When Derrick Bell was the one who used Critical Race Theory as a measure to determine the amount of racism in any given environment, because so many people were being discriminated against? I think these things should be taught, but in an academic, objective manner, which lines five through 10 eliminate, because they give us a premise that is historically wrong or could be, given the information that we have available. So, I want to thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm a Southern Baptist pastor, and the Southern Baptist Association fumbled this miserably, because they didn't know that critical theory was also taught in seminary, it just was not taught in dealing with race. So, they're gonna have some problems, too. But I hope that this bill is a wake-up call for us to revisit education and to reinvest in the future of our young people. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, anybody that knows me knows I'm a stickler for the rules, and right now, we're gonna have to recess, we're gonna wait here so the House can go into session, and as soon as we can, we're gonna restart this committee meeting. I'm not gonna cut y'all off, I want to hear from everybody. But, I'm getting texts here, so with that, we are officially in recess. Text the speaker that we're in recess, and let us know when we can, when we can start again, okay? Sorry about that, but just, I got put in this box, and I'm trying to figure out how to get out of it, and let all of y'all have your, have your time here to speak, so.
How long?
It's gonna probably be at least 10 minutes, if not longer, 10 or 15 minutes, too.
The chair will be there, and many of us, the present official, thank you. I appreciate it.
... about the race massacre in Tulsa, Oklahoma, a shameful near-genocide event that occurred on US soil. But let's not forget about what's happened in Alabama. An example that, off the top of my head, the race massacre in Utah, Alabama in 1870, among other examples that involve every corner of this state that are never taught systematically to generations of students, including my own. Alabamians have committed and experienced racially motivated bombings, lynchings, and cross burnings, all within living memory. Built-in inequalities in home ownership, education, and healthcare contribute to ongoing disparities in Alabama and elsewhere throughout the nation. The recent murders of Ahmaud Arbery and George Floyd and others are tragic reminders that we still have so far to go. We must all understand our own history is sometimes painful and flawed, but we must learn to embrace to be better as a people. The Roman philosopher and orator Cicero said it best, "To be ignorant of what occurred before you're born is to remain always a child." I want each of my students to become critical thinkers and educated adults. Critical race theory is not an indoctrination tool, it's a framework to help us understand and explain why these brutal events took place and why they continue. Critical race theory states that race is a "social construct," that we are all fundamentally the same, but that people have used racial differences as an excuse to enslave, steal, and murder. We cannot rewrite history, but we can learn from it. The second important job I have as an educator is to create a safe space for my children. I want my students to know I will always fight for them and give them the space to be who they are. As a state, Alabama prides itself on limited government, yet here we are with the state government trying to dictate whether professional educators use tools that recognize painful elements of our past and present injustices and create a safe, culturally appropriate spaces for our kids. I teach children from urban Birmingham. Just because something does not impact your family does not mean it doesn't impact anybody else. To this legislative body, who should represent all Alabamians, please spend your time solving the practical issues that are the real crisis in education, like teacher shortages, low wages, and the persistent and dramatic inequalities across the school districts in this state. Thank you.
Ms. Burns, thank you so much. That was exactly three minutes. Next, we will hear from, sure, microphone.
We don't have to ask too many questions about what they think, or we just wait until they all talk, and then we'll discuss it, how we're going to do this.
I'll sit here with you as long as you want to, Mr. Rogers.
Okay, well, let me.
Until my dinner at 6 o'clock tonight.
Okay, well, let me say one thing, and I'm glad you asked that question. I'm gonna say it in fact, black history and non-CRT is totally different, and what you're talking about here is saying we can't teach certain things because of the fact that it is considered racial in nature. Well, then you shouldn't have burnt down Tulsa, Oklahoma. You shouldn't have had the helicopter flying or taking property and land from so-called slaves, free men at the time. History repeats it over and over and over what happened, so if it's history, it ought to be able to be talked properly. I mean, I have no problem, I read the, I read the thesis the guy wrote from CRT, I mean, I don't know why I'm taking such a bad term, but if it happened, it happened. And if race hatred caused it, we ought to try to find a way to stop that. And if you flew airplanes over a neighborhood of color and destroyed the whole neighborhood with bombs, I mean, they did shoot people from out front of the sky, that ought to be discussed. If where the Indians were treated, it's not only for blacks, it's for Mexicans, Americans, anybody. But say you can't, I mean, the even worse part about it, you go up and say, can't even institute a higher education, can't even do it.
Mr. Rogers, I understand, but this is a public hearing for the public to put input, and I promise you, I'm going to let you, I'm going to give you all the time to debate this bill you want, but right now, let me get to a man none of us have ever seen before, Mr. Steve Murray.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. I'm Steve Murray. I'm Director of the Alabama Department of Archives and History. I bring to you two concerns about HB 312. The first is that it will inject fear into the K-12 classroom, further reducing the precious amount of time spent on history and civics. The second is that it will constrain standards and curriculum in such a way that they offer incomplete, flawed understandings of our constitutional system. I understand that legislation on this topic will advance this session. I respectfully encourage you to remove item K on page four regarding slavery and racism from the definitions of divisive concepts. Since 2017, the Department of Archives and History has delivered professional development institutes and social studies to nearly 1,400 K-12 educators representing every public school system in the state, as well as numerous private schools and homeschool networks. For decades, we have offered school field trips and workshops to teachers on specific topics. During my 16 years at our agency, our staff have never encountered an Alabama educator who seeks to use history or civics to set one group of students against another or to teach students to hate their country. What we do encounter are educators whose preparedness to teach social studies varies widely from excellent to ill-equipped. Most tell us that they have few opportunities for professional development and insufficient time in the classroom day to give history and civics the attention they deserve. Vaguely worded legislation against divisive concepts will do nothing to excise CRT from the K-12 classroom, because it is not taught there, as Dr. Mackey has confirmed. But such laws will have consequences, creating apprehension on the part of educators, who rightly will worry that a perfectly appropriate lesson on slavery or civil rights could prompt a deluge of criticism or even the loss of their job. Some teachers will conclude that teaching about discrimination in any form is too difficult, or they will reasonably conclude that the state has imposed a ban on all but the sunniest aspects of American history. A basis for that conclusion would be found in item K on page four of the bill. This is HB 312, 312's mandate, that slavery and racism are to be seen and taught only as deviations from, betrayals of, or failures to live up to the founding principles of the United States. The evidence tells us that the American experiment is a two-sided coin, featuring on one side the promise of liberty and equality, while engraved on the other side with chattel slavery, broken promises to indigenous peoples, and codified discrimination. The existence of the reverse side of the coin should not displace the founding principles in our image of America. It's important to be clear about that. But it must be examined alongside those principles, as a core part of the American experience, and not merely a regrettable deviation from an otherwise ideal progression of the nation's development. This is difficult work, but the outcome is a healthy patriotism that acknowledges the faults in our history while remaining committed to the process of building a more perfect union. Please consider removing item K on page four. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray.
I can't even do it.
Yeah, well, let's, but, let's get to the public hearing. John, I promise you, I'm going to let you do it, but let's bear with me.
Go ahead. I'm going to ask him a question.
Well, we'll get to it. Now we'll hear from Beth Hunter.
Hi, my name is Beth Hunter. I've lived all over this state. Currently, I live in Blount County, and I am a higher education teacher in the state. Really concerned about HB 312. It greatly impacts my ability to teach fact-based history. This bill does an injustice by proposing whitewashing our history. Students look to us to help them understand history, why Rosa Parks didn't give up her seat, why the Three-Fifths Clause was legal, and why Ruby Bridges had to be escorted to school. This bill restricts what I can teach and say, which is counter to the First Amendment. This bill doesn't allow me to teach the entire truth, and by virtue is a sin of omission. While other states may pass similar bills, Alabama can stop this bill and keep teachers in the classroom, continue teaching factual history, and have an educated, productive, compassionate population. Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hunter. Next, we will hear from Sarah McDavid.
It's McDaniel.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Since Mr. Oliver brought up colorblind ideology, I thought I would quickly point out, before I get to my written comments here, the colorblind ideology is not what we're going for anymore in 2022. That was maybe what we would have gone for before the founding of this country and what it was founded on. If I'm colorblind, I can't see the beauty of Ms. Hollis as a black woman legislator, and her lived experiences that have brought her here, that takes away her uniqueness and her beauty and her power. That's not what we're teaching our children, to be colorblind. I have three children of my own, and we talk about how talking about race is difficult, it's a little bit uncomfortable. I'm not colorblind, I don't want my kids to be colorblind, but it's still difficult then to fumble through what that means when we talk about my six-year-old saying we're coloring someone who's brown, and talking about what that means and how that's different from his skin. But we all live in skin with different colors that have been assigned different meanings throughout history and different departures from our American values. So let me get to what I was going to say. Good afternoon, I'm speaking to you today as a concerned professor and former K-12 educator, not on behalf of my university. With decades of desegregation orders in Alabama, we have yet to achieve unitary status in every district. One of the biggest reasons is that black students continue to be disciplined at disproportionate rates to all other students. In one Alabama school district, I won't name which one, black students are 17 more likely than their non-black peers to be disciplined. Why would that be? Surely, black students just aren't more prone to discipline, there's nothing different about their DNA that would make them so. So there's something more going on in our schools. This is a real and destructive pattern from which I've dedicated my career to improve. Unfortunately, though, for educators, students, and families in Alabama, a group of all-white, almost all-male legislators have taken what is an opportunity for honest and difficult conversations about how to improve the educational experiences and outcomes for all Alabama students, and chosen instead to present a national political dog whistle, contributing to the current culture war and dragging us backward. They have chosen politics over student well-being and performance, ultimately over the future of our state. Nothing in this bill has to do with reality in Alabama. Let me be clear, educators are not indoctrinating, inoculating, or compelling assent from students. Some of you have bought into a manufactured crisis. What we have in the list of 11 so-called divisive, although he said racist today, concepts, is veiled language intended to chill important conversations with students and educators regarding bias, history, and racism. This bill opens the door for litigation from those who disagree personally with true and data-driven issues related to almost every field of inquiry. But everyone wins when educators and students are able to have free, open, and yes, Mr. Oliver, sometimes difficult conversations. Everyone wins. These discussions are not causing actual harm. They are responsible and critically important to improving educational outcomes for all students. If you disagree with these types of discussions, the solution isn't restricting speech and uncomfortable discussions, it's opening up and having more. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. McDaniel. I apologize for mispronouncing your name.
King Cliff.
All right. Now we'll have, we'll hear from Corinne O'Brien. Did I say that right? Yay!
Mr. Chairman and members of the committee, good afternoon, and thank you for allowing me to speak on this bill. My name is Corinne O'Brien, and I'm the Vice President of Policy at A+ Education Partnership. I'm also a lifelong public educator, middle school math teacher, and assistant principal formerly. We do not support House Bill 312 for a couple of reasons. Number one, this bill is unnecessary. The Alabama State Board of Education has already committed to ensuring that the divisive concepts outlined in this bill are not taught in Alabama's public K-12 schools. Even before that action by the board, these concepts were not, and still are not, a part of the nationally recognized social studies course of study, which is approved by our State Board of Education. Second, there will be serious unintended consequences in the classroom that will place a difficult burden on our educators that are already stressed to the max. Alabama is facing a major teacher shortage, and COVID-19 has only increased this crisis. A recent poll showed that around a third of educators would consider leaving the field should laws similar to this one be enacted. And additionally, as educators try to navigate the new rules on what they can and cannot discuss in the classroom, they may avoid hard topics altogether to avoid serious consequences like losing their job. And that means that our students miss out on the opportunity to foster critical thinking like previous speakers have mentioned, and altogether could lose an excellent teacher. Finally, the public conversation about bills like the one we're discussing here today, coupled with the stifling of classroom discussion, will have negative impacts on the lives of, or excuse me, negative impacts on students who belong to historically marginalized groups. Our schools should be a place where students come together to learn from, with, and about each other. We want our schools to create engaged, educated, American citizens who can think freely and engage with a wide variety of thoughts and ideas. Age-appropriate guidelines are certainly necessary and important, but banning any idea symbolically or explicitly restricts our students from having conversations in their classrooms about current events, as well as learning from our path, both our successes and our failures. We should prepare and trust Alabama students to maturely, rigorously, and accurately discuss difficult subjects and be able to learn lessons that will brighten our state's future. Thank you.
Y'all are amazing. Y'all are hitting three minutes almost exactly every time. Now we'll hear from Bernard Smallleton? Bernard? Yeah. I should know it, because I think I've seen you before.
You may have.
Yes, sir.
I'm the one that posted somewhere, probably.
I think I was standing at that podium.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. I have some handouts. Could I pass them out now or later?
Pass them out later, because I don't want you to interfere with your three minutes.
Okay, well, she was going to pass them out.
Oh, she can, yeah.
Okay. And I will continue while she's passing those out. Again, good afternoon to everyone. My name is Bernard Smallleton. I'm President of the Alabama National Association for the Advancement of Color People, better known as NAACP. I offer my remarks today on behalf of the NAACP, as well as the NAACP Legal Defense and Educational Fund, which is a separate organization. Alabama have a rich history that must be taught to all students. Slavery and civil rights movement are part of Alabama history. We cannot deny that. The tragedies and triumphs that took place in Alabama from Montgomery Butthard to the settlement to Montgomery March awakened the entire nation to the reality of racial injustice in this nation. The vagueness of HB 312 is likely to cause confusion in Alabama classrooms, causing teachers to eliminate discussions regarding the important realities of Alabama history for fear of violating the law. We are also afraid that due to the ambiguous nature.
Move the microphone a little closer, people are, thank you.
Due to the ambiguous nature of the language, the implementation of this bill may look different from city to city and from county to county. Educators should not be expected to teach on unclear rules that may require them to sacrifice accurate teachings. Educators who fear that important but different concepts could result in guilt or anguish may completely abandon the subject. Indeed, reports have already surfaced indicating that educators are confused and confused. as to the prohibition of a recently-adopted Board of Education resolution, which addresses issues similar to those contained in HB 312. HB 312 may conflict with current state standards. For example, high school social studies standards require discussion regarding the abolitionist movement, the Ku Klux Klan, the Great Migration, and Freedom Riders, among others. In order to develop lessons in alignment with Alabama's state standards, educators must be free to engage students in robust and thoughtful discussion of topics pertaining to racial inequities in America. We implore this committee to support racially-inclusive school curricula and protect the ability of the students and educators to engage in robust discussion encompassing the full spectrum of American history. Equality education must include an accurate and honest accounting of history to provide students with the skills and tools to become analytical thinkers and the next generation of leaders. Therefore, we urge this committee to reject this proposed legislation. And if Representative Oliver really wants to remove divisive concepts, I think we can start with the removal of the Confederate statues that grace so many of our public buildings in the state of Alabama and across this nation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your speech. I believe you testified in front of me at the reapportionment committee. I believe your thing was written by the lawyers that are suing me. Now we'll hear from, is it Van Zeta McPherson? McPherson. My aunt is McPherson. I'm sorry.
It's all right. Barely get this off. Good afternoon. My name is Van Zeta Penn McPherson, and I'm an ordinary citizen, not formally connected to education. I am a lawyer and a retired federal magistrate judge. Last night, I did some unlikely bedtime reading. I read Alexander Stephens' Cornerstone speech, the speech he made in which he declared that "the proper status of the Negro in our form of civilization is beneath the white man and subordinate to the white race." So when I read this bill, I looked at it and analyzed it as a lawyer would. And I hope that by appearing before what is in essence a legal forum, that you will follow along with some of the analysis that I did. First and foremost, and this is an overarching consideration, House Bill 312 is itself evidence of a fundamental legislative lapse. The sponsoring legislators have defined divisive concept in part as that an individual should be discriminated against or receive adverse treatment solely on the basis of his or her race. And yet, for decades, this Alabama legislature, including perhaps some of you today, have affirmatively declined to outlaw discrimination or adverse treatment against a person solely on the basis of his or her race. So it raises a question that any lawyer would ask on cross. Does outlawing the teaching of discrimination advance society or moral behavior more than outlawing discrimination itself? I will leave that question for you to answer. Second, House Bill 312 contains several contextual legislative lapses. And I won't go into all of them, but three of them stick out. First of all, it outlaws that teaching that one race, sex, or religion is inherently superior to another race, sex, or religion. But it does not, on its face or in practice, outlaw the teaching that in the United States and in Alabama, the laws, customs, traditions, and lifestyles of all persons were governed by racial concepts. Second, House Bill 312 outlaws teaching that an individual should be dis... the concept that an individual should be discriminated against or receive adverse treatment solely on the basis of his or her race. But it does not outlaw teaching that in Alabama, that was precisely the sociopolitical and legal status quo throughout nearly three-quarters of the 20th century, issues concerning schools and education, use of YMCA's, public libraries, housing, and banking, to name a few. Third, House Bill 312 outlaws teaching, and this was mentioned by Mr. Murray, that slavery and racism are anything other than deviations from betrayals of or failures to live up to the founding principles of the United States, which include liberty and equality. But among the founding principles of the United States are, first, that slavery as an institution was at the core of the earliest American laws governing property ownership, taxation, and representation in Congress. And second, that slavery determined the circumstances of Missouri's and Maine's admission to the Union. And third, that throughout most of the 20th century here in Alabama, race and gender determine whether my ancestors could own property, serve on juries, vote, or acquire law or medical degrees in their home state. And race governed whom they could marry, where they lived, where they sat on a bus or a train, where they could have lunch or dinner or see a movie, and where they were buried. So it raises another one of those questions that a lawyer would ask and that I hope many of you will ask and answer. And here it is. Does HB 312 stand for the proposition that segregation based solely on race was enacted, that segregation based solely on race, which is a principle that was enacted, vehemently protected, and sometimes violently enforced by white Alabamians for centuries, was itself a deviation from or betrayal of the founding principles of the United States? Simply put, I'm asking whether or not you are ready to accept that racial segregation was a deviation from or betrayal of the founding principles of the United States. Now let me move to two other issues. HB 312 is irresponsible, and here are two reasons why it's irresponsible. It's irresponsible conceptually. It is certainly irresponsible as a law. It encourages and allows students in elementary and high schools, and also regrettably in universities, to disavow facts. For example, a teacher on active duty may not train a student or staffer to adopt a divisive concept. Thus, the bill actually approves miseducation in schools. And here's the danger. Because empiricism is a fundamental and consistent American value, this is dangerous. We accept empiricism from the weatherman, from the plumber, the physician, and the auto mechanic. But we question and outlaw it from teachers and professionals? Here's the second reason it's irresponsible. It prohibits teachers and other education employees from evaluating students legitimately, thus exposing them to insurmountable challenges and failures in adulthood. Example, a teacher on active duty, according to the bill, may not compel students to assent to divisive concepts. Thus, a teacher may not mark a test answer as incorrect if a student inserts his opinion in disregard of empirical fact. Here's the danger. An opinion on an 11th-grade history test in Montgomery County may be okay, but it is not acceptable on the SAT or the ACT for admission to college. And it isn't acceptable on the GRE for admission to graduate school. Regrettably, I harbor no illusion that my comments today will defeat passage of House Bill 312, but its passage would be a mistake. And I believe that when mistakes are willfully made, they should also be knowingly made. I will leave two copies of my comments.
You know what? You went considerably over three minutes, but I was not about to stop that well-thought-out. That was a very well-put argument. And you're an attorney? I would not cross you in a court of law. And I would not want to debate you. Our last is Mr. David Carter. You have three minutes, but...
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. My name is David Carter. I teach a little bit up the road, and I think what I do is teach divisive concepts. I've been doing it for about 25 years here in Alabama, for 22 years before that in the state of Maine, and before that in North Carolina. And the people at the podium before me have been so much more eloquent that I really just want to take a moment or two to speak from the heart and to talk about two things. One is fear, and the other is love. And the reason I want to talk about love is an experience I had this past weekend. I was traveling around the state of Alabama with about 65 public schoolteachers, K through 12, from Osceola County, Florida. And we had as our guide this remarkable, extraordinary storyteller, bridge builder, Wanda Battle, who was able to secure our access into Dexter King Memorial Baptist Church. And I've been in that church so many times that I forget sometimes the power of being in that space conveys. And yet, we had teachers who were literally reduced to tears being in this space that was built on divisive concepts. The belief in equality of the races was a divisive concept. The struggle for black equality was a divisive concept. And throughout our history, I think we see over and over again issues that have been unpopular, people speaking against the tenor of the day, accused of being subversive, of outsiders, of agitators. And I'd like to leave our teachers to do the teaching and not have us tell the experts in the classroom. Please, listen to the experts. Listen to people like the representative from A-plus Foundation. This is a solution in search of a problem, and it is not a good solution. And there is not a problem. For more than six decades, the official slogan of the dominant political party in this state, from 1904 to 1966, was white supremacy for the right. That was not a deviation. That was not an abomination. It was an abomination. But in the eyes of those who defended it, they saw that as the status quo and the way things should be. Thank goodness we recognized the importance of divisive concepts. And I just implore you, I do want to believe you will vote against this bill. I do want to believe that you all will do the right thing. And so I ask that in the spirit of the beloved community that people like Wanda Battle have devoted their lives to and that call us all to account and to keep peace with our conscience. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to thank each and every one of you who came today and spoke. And I'm going to allow any member of the committee who has a question for any of our speakers about what they said. Does anybody have a question for one of our presenters today? Shocking. We're not going to debate the bill, but if you have a question. Turn on your microphone. Our archives.
Yes, Mr. Rogers.
Steve, now, you kind of confused, I don't think everybody else would, but you were kind of confusing to me where you were coming from on your presentation. What you said, what you said, I always thought that especially in the place of higher education, have a right to teach certain things based on the fact that it's a bit of higher education. I mean, like at Auburn in Alabama, and of course, they ain't going to do that at Auburn, Alabama, but at Tuskegee and places like that, they got a right to teach certain things that occurred in history and teach it correctly. I mean, you know, and the fear that learning the truth will cause racial division, cause pain to the kids is wrong to me. I mean, that's the concept. I tell you, I think they should know the truth what happened based on what happened in history. If it happened, it happened. And it should be discussed, especially in a place of higher institution. But at one time, we had a bill, one time, I think I remember saying that y'all would disallow certain speakers to speak at colleges and universities. Now, the college is a place where you break down the truth and get to the understanding what's going on. Now, in your presentation, I can tell you are proponent or opponent. You sound more like a person who was supporting the bill at first.
He was listed as an opponent.
He said, oh, he's a opponent. Oh, that's why he said what he said. Okay. And now, you are, you're a proponent of the bill, but you, you kind of left me wondering where you really came from.
I'm sorry for that, Mr. Rogers. I didn't mean to leave any doubt about that. I don't think this bill is good for history education in our state for two reasons. It will inject fear into the classroom, as several other speakers have said. It will lead to teachers spending more time trying to determine where the minefields, the mines are in the minefield so they don't step on them and inadvertently get themselves or their school in trouble. Then they will spend time preparing good lessons in history education and civics. The other reason, as several people have mentioned, is this language about the definition defining racism and slavery only as deviations from or betrayals of the American values of freedom and liberty. And the point I was attempting to make is that we cannot separate those two aspects of the American experience. And we should not see those as deviations or exceptions to our country's founding, but as integral components of it, that we have a responsibility to understand and explore fully and to teach to our students that they need to understand that fully in order to have a complete appreciation for American history.
Well, you know, I'm going to tell you right now, you know, the concept is a lot of things I didn't know. I lived through this stuff, Vegas through 40s and 62s. Like, I lived through, I lived through it. I can explain. I knew about most of the people who were involved in this. I know them personally.
Yes, sir.
From King on down to the people, and some people who live in Oklahoma. And I always got the fear that the CRT should be taught. I have no problem with that. If it happened, it happened. I think we all are teachers who we get to understand and get to the point where both, we all bleed red blood. We don't care about, if I cut him, he gonna bleed red. If you cut me, I'm gonna bleed red. Then we can put our blood together maybe, and then we come up with a good answer. But the thing boils down to the fact that I think that we as individuals, the people ought to understand the concepts of why there was slavery. What happened with the, why were we brought over here from Africa with our own, where we were kings and queens in our country and made subservient? We all understand that. That's because there ought to be talk, and we look at it, so to speak. Why did they burn down a fluent town because of the fact that there was some concept they had? Why did they do this? What was the concept there? Those kind of things I think we need to learn.
All right, Mr. Rogers.
And use it for a positive.
All right. Let me ask, is there anybody in this room that has, that was not recognized to speak that would like to say something real quick? Anybody from the public? Anybody on the committee?
Will the public be back to ask questions too?
When we bring the bill up in front of the committee, the public's always welcome to come to my committee. Yes, yes. I'm never going to deny the public access to my committee. Ladies and gentlemen, with that, with this public hearing is now closed. Now, thank you for your attendance and your participation. We are adjourned.